And add to this discussion will be very helpful. So anyway, with that, Mark, let's go ahead and get started.
Well, thank you for taking another couple hours to talk budget. I think this has really helped. So I appreciate our discussions and hopefully, hopefully you all think it helps to to make the decisions as well. So if you want to open the really today, we're going to talk about the governmental funds and hopefully we can have a clear. Well, the next time we meet, the tentative budget is due and and then we have about a month and a half until the final budget is due. And so we would like to get a balanced budget for the tentative budget. And so today we'll we'll kind of talk about some, well, Curtis made a tool that will really help help us, help you give us some direction on how we how we'd like to balance the tentative budget. But I gave you the, I gave you the sheet. And you'll notice most of the figures stayed the same from last time there. I'll point out the, the big one was the transfer balance to be appropriated and transfer balance to be appropriated. That went, the last sheet I gave you had a $970,000 transfer. This one has a zero. So what what that is is just basically showing a revenue, but that revenue is pulling from our savings account. It's shoulder revenue. And so as we discussed it further, we thought it would be, we thought it'd be wise to just show it as a zero. So that kind of shows us exactly what exactly what we need as to balance the budget. But that being said, you know, department heads, they've been very financially responsible and and in the past, they've kind of, I guess, they haven't spent up to their allotted amount. And historically, it shows that they they hand back about 13% of their allotted amount to back to the general fund. That goes into our budget surplus and that allows us to transfer money to to capital projects and keep that fund balance strong in case of an emergency or or something. So we showed it at zero and we put in in the budget, we put in, this is kind of, this is kind of small, but Curtis' budget tool will show you more what this is. But we put in, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different things that we don't typically budget at this point, at this point in the year. The first two are showing budget transfers to capital funds, meaning the capital vehicle and equipment fund, and then our future road funds. Usually we don't show that in the beginning of the budget. And we go through the year and any surplus we have, we make those, the transfers at the end of the budget. And so if we're wanting to show what the sales tax, you know, what we really think the sales tax is going to be and be aggressive on the budgeting of the sales tax, we'd also like to present transferring over 80% of that sales tax because that's historically what the, what the council has or what the city has been able to transfer over into those capital projects. So the first two there are transfers showing upfront in the budget transfers to the capital projects. The next, the next one is the 7.2% cost of living adjustment for our current employees. That will allow the employees to maintain, you know, the, well, we tied that to the CPI. So if they go to the grocery store last year in January and this year in January, they get 7.2% less in goods as they did last year. And so to keep up with inflation, typically we do a, we do a cost of loving, cost of living adjustment and we're proposing a 7.2%. That 269,000, that's not for all employees. That's for the employees that come out of the governmental funds. So the, the general fund and and these other funds that are funded by governmental revenues, not the utility funds.
The 269 is just the general.
The 269 is just, just the general fund. Yeah. And then the other, the next five, the next six are additional personnel. So we are proposing, you know, or department heads are proposing in an increase in services to the, to the city and most notably, police officers. So four police officers and a police civilian position.
The sergeant.
Yeah, sergeant, three officers. Oh, I didn't put the civilian on there. But a civilian will show on this next tool and then the senior planner position. What is not included in this base budget or this draft budget is any sort of property tax increase. And that's that bottom one. So I will turn it over to Curtis and he will walk you through a tool that he's made. That will kind of help the council make some decisions here on how to, how to balance that budget and get rid of that 1.1 million dollar.
Curtis, before you start, I mean, two of those numbers reflected on the overall budget, but they're not all on there. So these are options that we're thinking about to put into the budget.
All of, we've included all of the expenses.
In the budget?
In the budget. So all of the transfers, all of the COLA, all of the police officers, all the planner positions, they're included in the budget as it stands now. And that budget currently shows almost a 1.1 million dollar deficit of revenues compared to expenses.
With all of these extra police, because I've seen them.
Yeah. So if you go to the police under general fund, if you go to police, it's about halfway down. Just in that note, it says four additional officers and one civilian position is included. That's why it's a $611,000 increase.
Yeah, I can see.
And the, the planner is two lines above that under planning and zoning.
Okay.
That's why it's $150,000.
Thank you.
What we did and maybe you can scroll down. Can I scroll with this or? Just perfect, right?
The size, just let me see the whole thing.
One more. So.
One more.
Oh, I want to make sure they can read it.
Okay. Yeah, we're good.
And make it a little bit bigger for me, maybe. You can see that net revenue is less expenses. They're right at the top. That's that same number, that 1.1 million, basically. So we matched this spreadsheet up exactly. And what I, what I built in here is options where this is the time for the hands-on council. We can play around with whatever scenario putting in. I'm going to start with the police department. It's a simple yes, it's a go, no, it's a not go. So if you say, hey, I want to fund one position, one officer, we'll put a, we put a one in there, it shows no, no reduction in the budget because that officer's added in. If you were to say that sergeant, I don't want to fund the sergeant. I'm just showing you how this will work. Lindsay, we put a zero in there. You can see automatically it's going to change that budget reduction column and show you that we've now reduced the, the expenses. And so it's bought our net revenue, our revenues less expenses down to 972,000. So it's automatically adjusting for you. So we can go through and do any scenario here with the officers, whatever you want to add. What, the other thing that we've built in is we can take a percentage of how much you want to fund for transfers. If you say, no, I don't really think we can do 100% of what you recommended. I think we can only do 10%. If Lindsay types in 10 in there of the, those transfers, not the personnel. Man, hold on. I don't want them mad at me. I wasn't even going to touch that one. The police can shoot me, but the other people beat you to death. The, the future, that, that shows you how much budget savings there is. And you can see to the bottom line. Now it's going to flip it to green and and all of a sudden, you know, we've satisfied one aspect of the budget. Now you may be short following future budgets by not funding those, but that's a whole nother discussion. But we, we can work, work through a lot of those. Same thing for personnel. You can decide if you want to do 100% of the COLA or various percent. Planner, same thing. Now, the bottom line, the property tax increase, and I know this becomes a touchy subject. Let's put the other ones back up to 100%. And put the officer in. So we're back up to our, our million dollar. We've gone through and done an analysis of where we think property tax will roughly come out valuation wise. And based off of our best estimates, best information that we have at this point in time, each 1% increase to the property tax rate. So when I say 1%, I'm not talking about a full 1%. I'm just talking about if we take what our current property tax revenues are and we go for 1% more of those revenues, it's about $20,000. We'll have to equate that back into certified tax rate. But as far as tax revenues go, if you want to increase property taxes by, by 1%, it's about $20,000. So to give you an indication here, if we wanted to satisfy all million dollars, we'd need about 50%. Maybe 49, 48. So what that means is everybody's property tax bill would go up approximately, oh, 52.
So just to go into that a little bit further, Tremont City only gets a portion of the real estate taxes. So if we increase Tremont City's portion 50%, overall, that's not 50%.
Their total tax bill.
Their total taxes. So I need to go look at my tax notice and see how much Tremont got.
We can pick on Mark.
Pretty medium sized house.
We, we need to talk so we know reality, where reality is at.
My house, I would say is probably pretty average and I paid $500 to Tremont City last year.
So you're talking 250 bucks.
Of the total tax bill. Yeah. Just the Tremont City's line. Oh, total tax bill was two, I could look it up, but 2,000 something. 2,420.
So 500 went. So it's about average to 20, 20% of your tax bill goes to the city.
So if Mark paid 500, if we went for the whole thing, 50% of putting him at 750.
750 out of now you're going to take 500 and take him up to 3,000. So 750, his tax bill will go from, you know.
If nothing else changes. If nobody else changes.
If nobody else changes.
So I'm, you know, I, I, I went and looked at mine, mine up and there's a little more than that. It's about $750. And so, you know.
Out of a total tax bill of, you got, you almost have to do it.
Huh? What?
Total tax bill of.
About 35.
Yeah. So, you know, 750 out of 35, you're talking about that 20% or some, some.
So I talked to, had a good talk with, with Rod Bennett this afternoon. That's where I've been. And you, this, this thing between commercial and he's not really sold on that. So I don't know that we can eat. But he does think that this maybe will be more, less of an impact this year than it was last year, the overall impact. So anyway.
What does that mean? Do they, they plan on increasing taxes on a county level? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think so. I don't think the county's in, in increasing taxes. And I don't know if it's just that the residential side of it won't be impacted quite as heavily as maybe it was last year.
The homes were valued. Look at last year's tax bill compared to the year before and your taxable value. Your, I think mine was, last year it was, my home was valued at 426,000. The year before, I think it was valued at like 205,000 or something like, so my, my residential home value went up substantially last year where that should flatten out because.
So commercial, the commercial side of it wasn't quite.
The value didn't go up so high.
Yeah, more of the shift was on to the residential last year.
So, you know, I really dug into this and so I went down and talked to Rod too.
Oh, good.
And the, the major shift for the county came with homes that were valued over 400,000. So the burden of the taxes of the county's increase fell upon homes that were worth 400,000 or more. Their taxes actually went up higher than what everybody below 400,000 did. So, you know, the burden went to one area which I, he decided, he can decide on his own. He gets voted in and he can make that decision on his own, which is totally unfair. But the thing that we need to understand is that we, we're talking about our homes going up in value, but the overall tax only stays at the same level. And so, you know, everybody's homes are going up and down in values and that type of stuff. Bottom line is, you know, they take all those values in and they need X, X amount of taxes that come out of them. And you get your fair portion depending on what your valuation is and that type of stuff. So when we're, we're talking about this stuff, it's, I mean, it's not one plus one equals two. It's all over the place.
I got the sense that even he doesn't, you know, it's, it's, it's so mixed up and convoluted that it's, it's really hard to, to understand how these tax shifts and valuations, like you were saying, and, and all of that kind of stuff comes into play. All I know is that when people look at their tax bill and they say, when we say, we didn't raise your taxes and they say bull crap. You know, and that, because I'm looking right here and it's gone up. So.
So my question is if, if we just, I pretty well grasped that whole concept of, of the tax deal. But if we put 100 more houses in Tremont, do we not gain them $200 worth of taxes on them 100 homes?
Yes. We'd, well, we gain, we gained some sort of growth.
In theory, you get the growth. It, it, it's more, like Mayor said, it's not one plus one equals two. It's, it's more factoring in the percentages and figuring out how does that really play out? And, and there, there's complicated formulas that the state, state tax commission has that the county assessors starting to have access into. And so that there's this idea of what your growth factor is. And that's what they allow you to get on top of your base property tax amount.
So last year it was like 80ish thousand, 80,000 and maybe some change. Which probably doesn't, it pretty much gets gobbled up into COLA, you know, I mean.
Your COLA, you know, 7.6, 7.2, which is calculated off of CPI is 269,000, $80,000 with the growth doesn't do it. But this year, we won't have the new growth.
Nope, it won't.
Because it's just not happening.
Mark's numbers, I mean, when we start talking 50% increase in your taxes, we're going to have every citizen in Tremont sitting here. And we're, they're, we're going to be hung on the square out here. So when you take a look at your situation, the increase is 250 bucks, even if we went for the whole amount, which, you know, I don't think we're going to be doing it. But even if we went for it, 250 over 2,700 is a 9% increase in tax. I mean, that is palatable. You know, if, because that's really what's going to happen is your taxes are going to go up 9%. You know, if we go for everything and somehow or another, you know, that's got to be communicated. So people know what reality is.
And I think that's, that's part of the reason why we wanted to have this tool is to give, allow you guys put up scenarios. We, we can spend time putting up scenarios and deciding what does it look like? And then we can start, we, as a city can start deciding, okay, if we're looking at X amount of dollars that we've got to raise property tax bikes, we'll have the dollar amount. We can start communicating, developing communication methods to, to start anticipating some of those discussions and, and really be able to communicate out there. What is this tax increase buying me? And that, and that's really what we want this tool to be able to say. Because right, right now, if I'm trying to communicate my language, I'd be communicating a 1.1 million dollar increase gets you five new officers, a planner, so that we can really plan our growth appropriately. We're going to, we're going to expand our abilities to really plan growth appropriately. And we're going to make sure that we get roads that we need as that growth occurs. And we're going to keep our vehicles that the city has to use to keep all of these services running, replaced and ready to go. That's what the, I mean, that's really what we're trying to say here. We, you know, everything else we're paying for. So this is your tool to play around with to, to decide, give us guidance on where it's going.
So is that a, is that future road fund? Is that our five-year, what we think we'll need in five years, Paul? Was that in, is that what that was? The 715?
The 715, so it, remember we estimated the sales tax at 2.8 million. And we took out the.
Let's go to the road fund, what the capital projects are.
Yeah, the capital projects and the road.
I, I think, I think the question, I mean, that 715 is going in every year. So this next year would be 715. If we did this increase, the next year would be 715. The next year would be 715. That, that's what this is saying right here.
It, it's putting aside money for future road projects, which we had the capital projects the last time that we spent a lot of time going through. And so all of those roads were, were out there to be funded. This puts money away to fund those road projects. So no, this isn't chip and seal. That, this is actual future roads so that people have what they need to be able to commute around the area.
But will that pay for all of, all of the future in the next five years? I thought there was going to be a, yeah, that's what I thought. It's like seven million.
Seven million, yeah. What we've, what we've seen in the past is that we're transferring 80% of our sales tax revenue. And so this number really is a backdoor way to get to that 80%. If you look at the, the brown ones that they're in the middle.
Sure.
That's 80% of our cell, of our sales tax estimated revenue. And so that's kind of just the last one that we put in. It was to make, to make that number 2.3 million dollars.
How do we get to that other one? We have budgetary savings. We, we challenge people to be as frugal as possible. And there.
For grants.
Grants, community president corridor stuff that the county's collecting. Well, I mean, we're going to go after every source that we can find to go out, you know, but.
I mean, I, I can do the math, you know, I mean, $700,000 in five years is 3.5. So we're at.
Half there.
We're half there. And so.
Yeah, this budget's not even
No.
beeped up to, to meet what we've been talking about.
But we don't want you to get hung either. We do want to talk about reality. That is, that is your reality. Thanks for bringing it up.
Well, that is. And so that's why I just wanted to make sure because that's how I understood it.
It is. Yeah.
And so is there anything that we can do with impact fees as far as?
Well, you.
I know we've, we've done some the growth, but is there anything else that we can do as far as understanding what the costs are, that the costs are going up? So does that, does that affect our impact fees?
Well, I think what we, what we decided to do is to, to set our impact fees to capture buy-in only. So we don't have any amount for future facilities because it puts us on a path of spending. I don't know if you remember that, one that we didn't think we could keep pace with. You know, because the impact fees weren't going to deliver the amount of money we needed to, to fund those facilities. So for example, when we do 1,000 North, we'll amend our impact fee and that'll increase the buy-in amount. So as growth occurs, we'll recoup our expenditures faster. And I think that's probably the best strategy in the short term is as we spend our money, we just update our impact fee to, to increase our buy-in amount that we'll collect with each, each building permit.
The biggest thing to remember on the impact fees is the time lag that we have to go through to get it all done. Takes forever to get, get it through. And then once we even approve it, then we're behind the eight ball again by having to wait three months.
Yeah, you're right. It is a challenge.
And I, I realize the position that everyone's in. So it's just.
Yeah.
Can we leapfrog ahead or? Anyway, I, but I do understand.
And hopefully it goes a little quicker. You know, this time around, the transportation for, in fact, was a whole new impact fee. And so I think Chris has perfected his method as far as these impact fee amendments. So hopefully, because he has a new format and sort of knows how to approach it, hopefully it goes a little quicker. But it is a little bit of a
I think the thing that kind of came home to me a little bit on this is, you know, looking at the, the roads and, and future capital vehicles and so forth. Most of that coming through sales tax revenue. You know, if we, it's sort of a Peter paid, you know, paying Paul sort of a thing. If we take it out of sales tax to sort of offset this deficit, all we're doing in the future, all we're doing is just putting us behind in the future. We might be able to solve the problem today, but, but it's a problem, it's what's coming up in the future that we're going to be faced with. And I don't know.
So can I be the devil's advocate again?
Again?
I mean, this, this is making more sense and I, I thank you because I feel like I'm understanding what's going on and what, what's happening. You know, for the longest time, we've always been sitting up here saying, you know, where can we cut? You know, that, you know, we're, you know, let's give incentives, you know, how many times have we approached it different ways and that type of stuff? I mean, I don't, I don't know if you know it, but this is the way I understand this when I look at the budget. You've actually defined what the cream is. It's 970,000 bucks. I mean, that's what we should be cutting down on the numbers in the budget by that 970,000. And that's going to show that we're pretty much breaking even. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Now we've been doing it year after year and that's, that's how we've done the budget and that's where you can give and take. And it, you know, it, it, it takes the buffer away from, from the management that goes on in Tremont. But the picture's not as bleak is, is we're pointing at because we're still funding all of these projects. And we still have 900,000 out there that, that really is unanswered for. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So and that, and we're, we're wanting to paint that picture to you because, you know, we, you always ask about the efficiencies and things. And that's why I gave that.
And I appreciate it. I mean, it's really helpful. Now, now we see, I, I'm starting to feel like I know better what reality is. I mean, that's the bottom side of the budget being very coarse and rigid with it.
Yeah.
And the other side is the way this has been presented. And I'm still apprehensive a little bit. I mean, you know, it was pointed out that we still, we still aren't, you know, putting enough money into the budgets to, to cover the capital expenditures the way we want to put them. I mean, so, you know, halfway in the middle.
And for the, for the department budgets, you know, we have to appropriate enough to where if they overspend, they're not getting in trouble. And so every one of the department has to stay within the appropriations. And the way that we've, you know, historically been budgeting, budget a little lower in revenues and a little higher in expenses. And then we take these, we take that surplus and we put it into the capital projects at the end. This year, we're trying to put it all up front in the budget so that, so that the council can see it. But we still have to keep it to where they can operate within their, within their allotted amount. And you know what? As a past department head, it, it's nice. I think, you know, I would, I would hand back money every year knowing that the next year I'm going to get that same allotment. I don't have to go out and buy fridges and freezers and all this stuff for the parks and because the council's going to take it away from me and stuff. And so we've created a pretty good culture. I don't know, maybe the other department heads can speak for it differently, but I feel like the culture that we've created is, is what, not one of just going out and spending because it's going to get taken away.
I appreciate what you're saying and it's worked well within Tremont City and that type of stuff. But when we're deciding how much of a tax increase to have, I'm just trying to. Deciding how much of a tax increase to have, I'm just trying to paint a picture that that it's not as bleak.
Right.
Is is it shows here.
If, you know, we could, we could work with this tool here. And there there could be a. A portion that you leave unfunded. Possibly, I don't, this is just an option. And. Like. For instance, in the twenty twenty-three budget, we have a three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar. Fund balance to be appropriated. But we fully expect that the department heads are going to. Understand their budget and we won't actually make that transfer of the three hundred and forty-seven.
So the budget, we we plan on how much do they usually hand back? What percentage?
It's been thirteen percent.
Seventeen percent, so.
Thirteen percent.
Thirteen. So can we say we're just gonna cut that back to seven? That knocks that in half of what we need, and we only need to have a twenty-five percent increase instead of a fifty.
I think in my mind.
Don't that take away our slush? It cuts urgency.
It's into it halfway.
Cuts half of it out.
But that's but that's kind of where I'm at and and. I think you just need to argue both sides here so we can see what. What is really what what works. But in my mind. You know, that that fund balance is goes into capital items. So what we're doing is we're just. You know, we already sort of established that, you know, even the road budget, you know, is is. Short. But if we. If we don't. If we don't go with the the some proposed amount, you know. And we utilize that fund balance. To help offset these costs. How is that going to impact our future? You know, are we going to? See this problem again next year, only it'll be. Exact it'll be augmented. It'll be bigger. It'll the problem will be bigger next year because. You know, we've we're not transferring those funds into capital items. That's my argument.
What helps is we've pre preplanned in. A couple of those, you know, eighty percent of what we expect to get in the sales tax where we hadn't done that in the past. And so. That helps us. It's more of a plan of savings instead of a plan of of spending that year, keeping that keeping those transfers. In the front.
Those fund balances, the fun fun balances.
The transfer to the fun balance.
Or the try, yeah, the transfer to fund.
So while I I'm really sympathetic to to what you're saying. And and budgeting down to, you know, more of what departments have spent. There. I will say, I've worked with a number of cities throughout my career. And I've seen a number of ways of budgets being developed. The the strictest of them. Budgeted down to where everybody had to have exactly what they were going to spend. And there was no allowance for possibilities to happen. If I needed to replace a vest or I, because some officer. Had something happen with their vest, they didn't have any extra money for a police vest, or they didn't have any extra. They went off of what a typical year of road salt was, and if you had more incidences, you had more road salt. And what happened with those budgets, because those people felt. Tight. They you had department heads coming to the council throughout the year going, I need a budget amendment for this. I need your authorization to spend for this. And and so they would have budget amendments almost every month. Because there was always somebody needing something. Now, the other thing that I saw, and and thankfully, we don't have this here. But literally, the department heads, for fear that a budget number would be running short, or somebody else would run over, some revenue wouldn't come in. They would spend every discretionary dollar that they had. So if they had money in there. So for equipment, they would spend that in July. The minute the minute the council passed the budget, POs were being written. And equipment was literally arriving on July first or second. So they spent. Every discretionary dollar that they had in there. So then, when it came in December and some projection wasn't coming in as planned, and the council's like, oh, we got a cut. Everybody's like, I my, all I've got in here left is labor and. It it created this culture of competitive, trying to vie for every dollar. And I haven't seen that in Tremont, and it's been kind of nice. Because those other ones were, it just changed the culture because those budgets were so rigid and so and so close. Where here, you give your department head, hey, you've got this much, be wise with it, and you're seeing what the fruits are about. So there is a culture that comes off this budget is what I'm trying to communicate. And I I I really. As the council tries to communicate that culture, I I want to make sure it's it's very clear what that culture is. And and we don't maybe distort some things that we don't mean to. Just something to consider is.
Appreciate that. I kind of picked that up from what Mark was saying, too. I mean. You got you got to weigh it all out. Just like everything, you see the good and bad and everything.
But. You know, also, you know, if you look at. Funding this thing as it stands. You know, fifty-five percent increase in the Tremont portion of the of. That's going to be a, that's going to be a heavy sell, you know, and. I like what I like what you said, Lyle, is, you know, you put it in the hole over the. Your entire property is about nine percent.
But we can't, we can't say it's a nine percent. We know that that's what it is. But Tremont City is asking. For fifty of, you know, of a two hundred and fifty dollars. We need another hundred and twenty-five a year. Tremont City, what the county does, what the abatement does, what the. Drain district does and all that with raises, we can't.
Can't control that.
Can't control that.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's the hardest thing because. Where I live, I live around a bunch of widows. And I know of one lady that. She has her heat down to like sixty degrees because she can't pay for her heat in the winter. So when you say, oh, it's only. Twenty bucks a month. Well, yeah, for her, that's.
Some people, that's medicine or food.
That's exactly right.
In today's world, that's.
That's the hard thing. That's really the hard thing, especially looking at my taxes. And. Hey, if if everybody's tax are, you know, I mean. Someone's making out like a bandit because for the last three years mine have gone up. And I'm now paying. I'm not quite where Mark is, but you know, I mean. But it started at like nine hundred, and now I'm up to two thousand. In probably the last three or four years. And then you start going.
Well, this is the part. This is the part that's really, really hard to understand is. They can say that, well, we haven't increased your taxes at Milla or that, you know. But. You look at them and you say, yeah, my taxes have gone up. And so it's really hard to.
They did, and it is. Your home was worth four hundred thousand or more.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what happened.
I've done enough with property taxes. I used to work with property tax systems. The the best way to look at it is if you you have to look at what the your value of your home is. And then you have to look at what the rates for each individual entity have done.
Yeah.
And you and really what you want to do is monitor the rate. Because I'll. I can almost guarantee you that if you went through and tracked the city's rate. It will have trended down. Because the certified tax rate in an increasing value environment, the certified tax rate has to decrease. The problem is, the overall decrease will typically be less than your increase in your home at some point in time. And so you we your your property taxes have to go up at that point because the value of your home's gone up more than the rates dropped. But if you if you benchmark what the rate of the city has done, and this is what we would do. Is we we could show over the last ten years, the rate started at this one, and it's gone down to here, and that's been X percent of decrease. It doesn't, it doesn't. It doesn't answer the question of what do you do for the widow? I mean, you can explain property tax abatement programs and all these other features that are out there to help them. But at the end of the day, they're they're going to pay more in property tax because the rate's going up. I what. We've talked about property taxes in the past. What what we're trying to do is get it to where. The city doesn't at some point feel like they have to do like a hundred percent increase in taxes like what they did down south in a few areas. That because property taxes by their very nature will not keep up with the expense increases. And this year exacerbates it because your cost, the the cost of everything has gone up. And and we're just trying to figure out how to handle that.
Yeah.
And I know you guys are too. We're just trying to give you the tools to try and decide, okay, what are the priorities? And realistically, that's to a certain extent, that's maybe what this boils down to. What are the priorities?
And, you know, I I was just gonna say, Mark and the mayor and I had a conversation this afternoon, and I thought it was really insightful, and. We looked at the spreadsheet and we broke it down into three categories broadly. And it might be a good way to think about it and think about it in terms of messaging to your constituents, which is. You know, those capital projects, those transfers, essentially, we're maintaining the same level of service or the same level of funding as we have in the past. It's just, we're just saving it on, it's more of a savings plan. We're doing it in the beginning. When you look at those officers and the planner, that's a new level of service. You know, that's what they're they're getting by virtue of of the property tax. The COLA is essentially just preserving the same buying power. Of our employees in their paycheck, which is sort of been done through the social security program. I think they also received a pretty healthy COLA. As well. And I think that's really what it breaks down to is is what's showing here is a new level of service. And is that something the city wants to do? You know, is that something the residents would support?
Well, I can. With the officers, for me. It sort of comes down to, you know, not only public safety, which is. Paramount. But it also comes down to officer safety, you know, we don't want to have. We've got the situation at times when officers are. On their own, you know, particularly at night or whatever. We get an officer that is called to a domestic dispute. You know. It's. Do we want that officer going into that situation on their own, or do we want them to have a backup? And in my mind, at least, that's pretty important. And public safety is. You know. Public safety is going to be a probably. For most people, that's something they can understand that they need. I think the the. This idea of putting the money away for future capital projects. Certainly, you know. All you have to do is drive around Tremont a little bit and see all of the. Creating creating potholes that are starting to. Because of the winter, you know, they're starting to. Show up. Everywhere you, you know, a lot of places where you wherever you drive. Whether or not we need. Four officers and a civilian right now, that can be argued, I guess, but. I feel like it's important that we at least. Our officers, you know, we do have backup. We do have that. You know, those two officers always on on board, you know.
One. Go ahead.
So, you know, again, I seem to be the only one ever asked this question, is is we're bringing in four policemen. Is is Garland gonna step up?
Garland Garland already has, so it's a per. They're a little bit ahead of where we should be with officers. In part because the school district pays for school resource officers. And they saw the opportunity to essentially get an additional officer at half the rate, because that's. That's essentially what the the school district offers. So proportionately, they're ahead of where. They should be, and we would be catching up now. You know, the chief would have to answer, I don't know readily what that four officers represent. Exactly compared to.
It was one one officer per.
Yeah.
Per so many people.
I have that, yeah.
That was in there somewhere.
I'd be curious to see what Garland's population is and Tremont's population to that number, because, you know, my. I'm just guessing. But I'll bet you money.
He's still got that.
Out of four policemen, they ought to be picking themselves up.
Garland is. One officer per six twenty-five. And we are one officer per eight eighty-four.
Right.
We're trying to get to one officer per six.
Six twenty-five, and we are one officer per.
Eight eighty-four. That's that's if you go by officer per population. If you go by officer per call, that's another thing and. Kind of makes it hard where we're both the same department now, but. Tremont has the most calls per officer as well.
You can see that on his weekly report.
Yeah, Brigham's this was this was done when Dustin gave us the presentation.
My guess is.
To Garland.
To Garland.
Seventy-five to eighty.
How many police do they have?
Does that four? Yeah, and.
And how many does Tremont have?
Twelve. Twelve.
Is that one officer? Is it in? Are they in post right now getting?
Yep, that 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 needs to be answered in my mind to, you know.
You know, this. This tool kind of. Allows, we broke it down per every position. Because. We realize, I mean, we've never made a jump of six full-time employees. In one. Budget year, you know, that's that's a pretty big commitment.
Isn't it?
I got a question on that, and that sergeant, are they gonna hire him in at that wage? Are they gonna promote within and then go back and hire a cop? So that number probably wouldn't be quite as big.
Probably what they're gonna promote.
Well, yeah, because it would take the one oh six, they would promote them, and that would be the difference in the twenty.
Oh, the twenty thousand in wage. Okay, okay.
Another another thing is, you know, you're looking at the budget year, and chances are. This was discussed this afternoon also that, you know. They may not be able to get all of those officers on deck. Certainly, at the beginning, it'll be a some sort of a percentage of the year that's going to be left by the time if they can fill those positions.
Right, remember Chief Cordova told.
It's gonna be something less than that.
He told us that one time, if they would have had that shooting in behind Lazy Boy, they could have lost two or three officers. And then. You know, just for the inquiries and all that for.
Well, they would have been offline for.
Two to four or five months. For them to get done and. But, yeah, that. I can see that's a lot, but.
So we've got four policemen coming in, right, and a planner, that's the fifth. And we've got three police or three firemen, right?
They're already.
They're out of the fire fund, so they're not in the general fund.
Yeah, but we're increasing.
Yeah.
We gotta cover their wages.
Yeah, well, that was through a budget, that was through a budget.
We amended.
And it's already, it's prefunded in the twenty-three budget.
Yeah, the transfer to the fire department already contemplates that, so we've contemplated all of that.
Yeah, although I would say to your point, Lyle, I mean, it's a fund that we're watching because it's very dynamic. I mean, I think we. Are taking a little bit of a leap of faith. I mean, and Curtis has looked at the numbers and feels like, you know, we can do it, but. But it is sort of a new. A new expense that we're watching closely.
That's eight new people we're bringing on. And so all of the arguments and the, you know, the police, the the people that have come in here, you know, growth and it's going to cost us money and we've been. We've been holding back and not doing this over time, and now now we're correcting it. It's gonna be ugly.
That's why we're looking for some direction from the council. Let, let's figure out, what do we adjust, what do we adapt? Because we've gotta come up with a budget within a month. We can put anything in there and play around with it and see what the numbers do.
Just for fun, let's, uh, let's just say that we look at, uh, you know, say you take out, out the officer and perhaps the civilian right there.
What's the civilian? I, I guess I don't know what they're trying to fill. Another Tara? There's only one Tara.
Take out one of the officers.
You took your planner out instead. We.
Did we get by without a planner for?
Can we contract a planner like we are, or, I don't know, that's.
We do, we do contract some of it, um, some of the long-term planning. It really becomes an issue of the current planning. And, you know, right now, it's not extremely busy, but it can get busy quickly, and that's when we're really ill-prepared.
What if you used your building inspectors, that company?
Nobody wanted that job, did they?
No, well, we did. Yeah, no one wanted, um, it as proposed as an employee. We, we put it out to bid, we also put it out, um, separate, so building was one RFP we did, and then the zoning, we did get one zoning, I think the rate was a hundred and fifty bucks in an hour.
Be like a professional engineer.
Yeah, and so, I don't know, I, um, you know, obviously, we didn't act on that, and right now, we're sort of in a lull from a development, although it's, honestly, I'm, you know, I'm filling in the gap, and it's, it's busy even though it's not busy, if that makes sense. I mean, it, it takes a lot of time, and there's a lot of things that we're not doing, and the state is gonna really, really, um, hold us, uh, they're gonna scrutinize affordable housing, and we're gonna have to be, we're gonna have to be making sure that we're making strides, or there's gonna be financial penalties, including daily fines, is what they've told me in the, the recent training as it relates to some legislation that just got adopted. Two, holding back sales tax is another hammer that they're, they're, um, that was approved through the legislative process. And I still need to figure out exactly what those, you know, to what level that represents, but I'm, I'm just saying it's, it's, it's critical, it's a legislative priority that the state legislature has, and they're, they're pushing it down, that, to a point where we're gonna need to make sure we're, we're complying.
That's what I was just thinking, is in the interim, if we couldn't, you know, use a company.
We.
Like an engineer.
Yeah, we could, I think we could.
We wouldn't have benefits and everything on top of it.
When I put out the RFP, the hard part was, is that we, they need to be involved, um, and be here, and so it's a little bit of a demanding, um, it's not something they can do sort of on the side. I mean, that was the hesitancy, that's, that's why some of the people didn't put bids, is they felt like it was a little bit beyond what they could commit to and still keep their other projects and other clients happy. So.
What other cities do have, Brigham got planner?
Three.
Three? Oh.
Well, I mean, that's Paul, if you count Paul, uh, he's their economic community development director, so they have a director over that department. They have, uh, Mark Bradley, who's their city planner, and they have Tony Ekins, who I think, I don't know what his official title is, but he essentially does planning work.
Hyrum, do you know if Hyrum has a planner?
Um, no, I don't, I don't.
I know they're a little smaller, I'm just throwing out.
They're under ten thousand.
Does the county have a planner?
Three.
So let's just take that bottom line and let's see what the impact is. Is that that line thirty, or is there one below that?
That's, that's where you wanna be.
But we're. What number, do you wanna zero in the highlighted area?
Uh, it, it's just gotta be something close to zero. I mean, there's some variance here that.
Right.
You know, uh, this isn't, one plus one doesn't always equal two. I mean, we're, it, the, there's gonna be variances through this, so the goal is to get to close, as close to zero. So, I mean, you could go to forty-five, you're gonna be at, you know, short by just a little bit. I mean, you could target, that'd give us some guidance, um, you know, but you're still looking, that's a property tax increase. It, it, it's designed to tell you, it, we'd be shooting for about a nine hundred thousand dollar property tax increase. That, this is just a tool trying to get ranges, ideas, help get us all on the same page, so we're, we're shooting for the same target.
So really what that did for us, that, you know, I don't, that saved, what, ten percent on the, from fifty-five to forty-five?
A little bit over two hundred thousand.
Do that, a little over two hundred thousand.
So instead of a fifty percent increase, now we're asking for, what, a forty-two?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Yeah, this'd be forty-five, the other one was fifty-five.
I mean, you can just sit and calculate it in your head, you see exactly what's going on.
To a certain extent, this, this just shows it, just slaps you in the face, but, I mean.
Thanks, we, we needed that.
I, I'm not trying to be rude here, I'm just trying, we're just trying to put.
Oh, yeah.
Everything, yeah.
This is perfect.
That's it, in a nutshell.
It's making me sick.
What can we live with and what can we live without?
Choices, and we're just trying to understand the priorities.
I would, I, I guess I need, we need Dustin to explain the extra help unless Lindsay knows the civilian, I mean, are they just understaffed? Are they as understaffed as you guys are out front, or in here?
They're having to close the office down during the day to come over and do evidence, because you legally cannot do evidence with one person, there has to be two people. So in order to come do anything with evidence, they are shutting the office down so that Tara and Mandy can come here and work on evidence, and they have nobody else to.
So does that have to be a officer, or can it be any city employee as a second evidence person? Do you have to have qualifications?
I mean, that, that's a good point. You bring on four different officers, one of them oughta be able to come and handle.
And you know what? Chris hit it on the head. If, if they could take Tara and one full-time firefighter, I know that they probably need him for something else besides that, but maybe them, ten hours a week on evidence, we could use one of his firefighters, that if they got a call, they just lock the door and come by, you know, I don't know. At the full-time with benefits, that wage?
Yeah.
Could we part-time somebody into it?
There's already a part-time, so then do you share desks? Do you, I don't know how you'd, I don't know.
When I was here last time, listening to Dustin's presentation, a lot of it was driven off of calls per officer and the officers per citizen. You know, 'cause it, it's, it's that being able to respond, um, you know, I, I'm not sure. If I was hired in as a police chief, I'm coming up with a plan for how to run my department. I'm coming to you with, with the suggestions. Um, yeah, I, I think taught, having a conversation with him and asking, is there anything he could adjust? I think that's viable. Doing something without input, I would feel slighted if I was him, you know, just.
Right.
If you were Dustin, you mean?
He'll be here tonight, I hope.
Yeah, if I, if I was in his shoes, so, I mean, it, to a certain extent, this is unfair trying to put this on you, but it, it gives the effect so you can maybe have some discussions. What, what if there's one less officer? What does that do? If, if you don't have, so, it, those would be the type of questions I would like to be asked if I was in his shoes. What, if, what would this do to our citizens? What, how does this impact the service that we're delivering? 'Cause, yeah, I, I'm not gonna pretend that I can answer that.
He'd be able to tell us if three officers would get us down to the number that he wants, whether it's six twenty-five or whatever the state recommendation was.
I think the goal was to go from thirteen up to nineteen eventually, wasn't it? Wasn't it long terms?
Yeah, but I mean, our, our numbers, he was saying that we're at one for eight hundred and eighty-four people.
Yeah.
He had a goal, but I don't remember what that was.
Yeah, so, uh, if we, if we gave him all of these ones, we'd be down, still down two officers.
From the goal?
From the goal.
Oh, from, from what he asked, almost.
He did, he did have a, again, I kinda wish he was here, but.
Yeah.
He says, the recommendation toward the future, Tremont should hire eight more officers over the next four years, one to two officers per year, so, and, and then we had another talk, and that's where he brought the five, or the four. This is four sworn officers and one civilian. So.
Yeah, uh, uh, you know, another way, and I agree with what Curtis says, but another way is you might ask him, how much do, does he really think he can recruit during this budget year? 'Cause that might be another limiting factor in the process for him.
So Lindsay, when they hire somebody that's going to post, do we pay for that?
Yeah, we pay them to go to school. Post is free if you're sponsored. We just have to buy their gym clothes and all that stuff.
And they just go on the payroll right then?
We're paying, we're paying the price.
So it don't cost anymore? You're just paying for training?
What do you think?
Okay, what are you two secret over here? I missed that part.
Oh, we're just.
I know your brain's starting.
We're just thinking about the gallows and what they're gonna look like, is all it is. You know, I, I think about, I think about, um, our insurance we pay on our house, fire insurance and, you know, that kinda thing, and, um, it's probably, you know.
A lot.
It's a lot. It's more than a thousand dollars a year, I think, gotta think about that. Anyway, it's, if you figure, you know, what we pay for protection, uh, from the insurance company, uh, it's expensive. But really what we're doing here is we're, there's insurance that the city is offering to the public as well, and, uh, fire insurance, you know, not fire insurance, but fire protection, that if something were to happen, we'll respond. And there, there's, there's a, there's a public safety feature, you know, if somebody's in trouble, we've got somebody there that can.
We owe it to our citizens to keep them safe.
We owe it to their, yeah, we do, and, 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 but that, that insurance that we pay for through, through the commer, you know, through commercial companies and that kinda thing is not cheap. In a way, this is kind of the, we're, we're providing services that the, that the public, um, benefits from, day in and day out, probably more so from the public, more, more so from local government than probably any other form of government, or the day-to-day things that the, that we provide for them, you know, whether it's, uh, sewer, roads, or, or just about whatever it is. So, I don't know, it's.
Well, I was just gonna make the comment, I think there's one homeowner that's very grateful that, uh, we have a fire department.
Right now.
And it's the house that sits right next door to the one that burned, 'cause I drove by that, and, you know, you guys did a great job for as close as that house or that garage was, and the flames that were coming out of it, you saved that other house. I mean, it's got a little exterior damage, might have some smoke in there, but they're, they're still in their house. And that right there is one of the reasons why we have a fire department.
My, my theory has always been, when it comes to finding the right number of personnel that's full-time, part-time, whatever, it's just, it's like the example of the insurance, right? Say I have three different cars, you know, two of them I have full coverage on, one I just have liability. The department or the city has to determine what is the right balance between full coverage and liability, right? 'Cause you have to customize this to the city, just as I have to customize my insurance policies for my home or my cars, to find that right balance. Yeah, we'd all love to have full coverage, right, on everything, but not have to pay for it. So there's some things that we can dial back and do, like liability on, right? And so it's finding the right number of personnel, even, even for the police department, it's, it's finding that balance of not quite full coverage, but not, a little bit more than just liability. You just have to find that right balance, too.
What's truth in taxation? When do we have to have our request into truth in taxation?
Uh, first part of June. And then, and the actual public hearing doesn't happen till, I think, second week of August?
Second week of August.
We gotta know where we're at by June first.
Well.
You gotta have a tentative budget come first of May, and that's gonna give you some indications.
Yeah, June twentieth is when we either adopt the final budget with no truth in taxation, or we alert the county that we're gonna go through with truth in taxation. And then the public hearing would be August fifteenth.
So, like, no later than August fifteenth, right? Or is that?
I think that's when the day would be for us.
Coming back to that transfer, you know, that, that transfer to the fund balance, is that one of those, Chris said, is, is sort of one of those things, how much coverage do we, do we feel like we want to, uh, feel like we wanna purchase? Can some, you know, can some, some of the pressure be taken off? Is it, is it easier to ta, do a little at a time, other than try to make one fell swoop with a, with a, you know, with a knife? And, and I'm just wondering if it's, if it's one of those things that would be easier to, over a couple of, you, you get ourselves geared up instead of trying to do this all at once? Just my question. Curtis?
I, I think that's really a question among the council. I think that's a good discussion topic as to, you know, what, what's the old phrase, there's so many ways to skin a cat? I mean, i- it's, it's really, as much as I hate to say it, the council's making some tough decisions this time, and we're just trying to provide the facts so you guys can have a good discussion. And, and decided, give us some indication on how to, how to present a balanced budget come the tentative budget time. There'll be a chance to make adjustments by tentative in the final, but we do need to have a balanced tentative budget.
Well, I don't, I, I don't see any, I was gonna say, that's not me. I can't see many cuts and all that, and we've relied on sale tax and, but do we want a forty-five percent increase and, and do it all, or do we twenty percent and go without something and next year plan on another twenty percent? And twenty percent increase on taxes is still gonna hurt the widows and the, that kinda stuff. But if we just, I mean, I, I don't wanna build it into the budget, we gotta raise taxes every year, by no means, but. But if we just, I mean, I, I don't wanna build it into the budget, we gotta raise taxes every year by no means, but do you pull the Band-Aid off slow, do you pull it off fast, do you? Tough decisions.
I've got a question. Like the police department, I know that the county covers, you know, a lot of the other cities besides Tremont and Garland, but I know that our officers still respond there. And I don't know how the funding works between cities, but if we ever tried approaching like Deweyville or some of them others, because our officers typically are there, at least they are, I see them there on like wrecks and stuff like that. And I don't know to what extent they help cover that with the county. But is there an opportunity there to approach maybe some of the neighboring cities?
Can I, can I answer that? Without sounding totally derogatory, we went out to ask them to pay their fair share of, of citizens using, you know, senior center, senior center and that type of stuff? You thought that we were asking them for their arms and legs?
That's too bad, I know them guys, and half the time they can beat the county folks.
So.
As far as response.
I've, I've been involved with a- agencies and trying to be multi-city agencies. And when it comes budget times and difficult decisions like this, you get into fights of, well, how many calls did you really respond out to our area? How much time did you? Whereas the, the county typically says, we'll put a deputy out in your area for eight hours and this is the cost. And, and most of the time when it comes to cities, the city can't really do that per se, they, they have less success, cause th- those cities just try and argue over how much they're really paying for, and I've seen cities just fight over it, and it's not, and, and they wanna make it a joint union, I, I was surprised how well they've done with Tremont and Garland, honestly, I, I kinda ducked my head when that happened, cause my past experience, I don't know, I, so. It, I, I'm not gonna say it's not possible, I'm just gonna say I haven't seen true success, and the state just broke apart the unified part, or unified police department.
Right.
I mean, it, I, I don't know, I.
Just a question, I was just curious.
It's very valid, it's a great.
It's a great idea.
We've done it with fire. You know? County pays how much, Chris? Or, you know, unincorporated towns?
Fifty-something.
Yeah.
Not very much, it's a.
Every house pays in the, pays the city back that we respond to out of Tremont city limits.
But we do bill the county when we respond. And that's another thing that we've talked a little bit about to try to help offset some of the costs of the fire department is, we're not really going after for like vehicle accidents and stuff, what we could um, charge to the insurance companies for those vehicles. Typically, we will bill for like cleanup, we use some materials to help clean up oil. We don't typically charge if we secure the vehicles, it'll start on fire between the time we leave and the tow truck company comes. Um, so I think we're missing some opportunities there, and that's, I think that's a decision the city council has to make, plus, structure fires, homeowners insurance do cover a certain amount of that, and we never billed them in the past for a fire response, because they're.
Inside city limits, the one that are paying taxes for it, we don't bill their insurance, and most insurances will pay five hundred, seven hundred dollars.
I mean, for example, like the, the, the fire out of Butter's tractor.
It's paid four thousand.
They paid us four thousand that we would've never even gone after, so that's four thousand dollars that comes back, that's from the insurance company. And now, now, there's a difference, I don't think, you know, in the city, we bill, if we bill and the insurance company doesn't pay for it, I don't think we go after it at that point, but if the insurance company's gonna pay, I mean, it's, it's, there's some discussion, I think, there.
Well, I, I, I thought we recently amended our fee schedule to, to allow you to do that.
We talked about it, but I never heard it final.
I'll, I'll verify.
Any other discussion on this, or should we move on?
I'd like to have a little bit of guidance.
It's easy to just kick the thing down the road.
All right, Mayor, I.
Not gonna let us off the hook, huh?
We, we've got a budget.
We got it, we got a budget coming up.
And there's no other city council meeting between now and then. And I, I'd like, I'd like for us to have a little bit of guidance so we can, I'd, I'd like for us to have a lot of guidance. Let me rephrase that, I'd like to have complete guidance from you.
Why don't we, why don't we just, each of us give her, give her thoughts? And, um, and then maybe as a, a group, we can come up with some, some direction for Curtis. Curtis and, uh, Sean and.
I'll start.
Mark.
Say, I, the planner position, I think right now, for me, I've, if we do part-time or no for right now, we'll just have to make it work. Um, looks like the police department, I'd put the other officer back in. I think that's gonna be an easier sale, and.
How about the civilian?
I think you're gonna need someone, you, somehow, some way, sounds like they need help, so. I.
What about the capital items up above?
I think if you start playing with your capital items, you're looking what you could do with your capital vehi- vehicle fund is if we started looking at leases and see what happens there.
The only thing I see with leases, Rick, what little bit I know, like cop trucks, they're fifteen thousand into cages, and radios and, and that kinda stuff. And that's, somebody would have to show me that you're gonna get that back out of it unless you sell it to another cop. And that's about the profit in it, buying it at what we'd buy it for and sell it, in my eyes. Somebody would have to show me on paper what it's gonna be.
So, and I mean, see, I mean, that's a good, a good response, but, I mean, that's just what I
Yeah.
was looking at, it's that way. So that would be the only thing, cause if you don't start doing anything with your roads right now, it's not gonna matter.
I think, I think the road thing has got to be sort of, maybe, in my mind, that's, that's gonna be something that's sort of off limits, I think we got it.
Me too, I'll agree with, I'll agree with keep our road and our vehicles and.
I agree.
Them, them two, and the rate, well, I can't say raises because it'll be, it's conflict of interest for me, but I wanna, I'll quit, but I'll, I wanna keep every other employee in the city. Every one of them's valuable and.
Well, you know, what it comes down to, it's just like you said with the roads, we don't even have enough money in there to do our needs for the next five years, so.
Right, I think that's gotta be off limits.
So. I mean, it's still not enough, I, I mean, even that one position, and you start looking at it, it drops you three percent on taxes. Or seven, but.
I mean, we can absorb that fifty-six hundred on the bottom somewhere.
Well, I keep, come, yeah.
I am, go for it.
So I'm, I'm approaching it from a, a different viewpoint. And I've, so, you know, first off, when, when chief gets here, I, I do have some questions about Garland and that type of stuff, you know, if Tremont should have to cover that many police, or Garland should be helping us out or not, that's just something on the side, which I believe is really, really small to the whole picture, a hundred thousand bucks. So here, here's my scenario, Brigham just did it. They went for a fifty percent increase, rubbed everybody nuts, and then they backed off to twenty-five. We could do that, that's, that's what I think ought to happen. I really don't wanna do in this setting, but I think, you know, to give direction in that type of stuff, you ask for a fifty percent increase, and then you back back to twenty-five percent, you're talking four hundred and fifty thousand now instead of nine hundred. And the other twenty-five percent's gonna come from the slush that we've got in the budget already. So you're still leaving half of that on the table, so people don't feel like that they're getting strangled with their budgets. And the thing balances out at that point. So a twenty-five percent increase, but you ask for a fifty upfront, because if you ask for twenty-five, I mean, we might as well be going for it. Does that make sense?
So are you gonna put that planner position back in and then just go for fifty? Is that what you're saying, or?
So I'm, I'm saying that you could cut back on some of that stuff, I questioned one police officer.
Okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
The civilian, I'd like to hear the police chief's, you know, comments about, maybe I might have a different idea when he gets done talking.
But that, that gets it down into a range that, that started, okay.
It balances out at that point if you're. So now instead of two hundred and fifty dollars increase, we're talking a hundred and twenty-five dollars. There has to be some type of help coming, I feel that way personally. You know, cause we've been putting off doing this stuff, we should've been doing it before now.
Well, I wonder, you know, I wonder too, along those same lines, if, um, you know, maybe we're looking at taking it a step, kind of a step at a time rather than, than, um, all at once. I'd rather see it, you know, to, to do it a little at a time and, and get ourselves up to where we need to be. It's gonna be not like there's any, there's anything there that is not really, really needed. It's just that, what's, you know, there's just gonna have to maybe be some, some adjustments, some hard adjustments. What do you think, Wes?
Well, mine is, I, I like it as is, I know it sounds terrible and all that, but I think you're gonna be months, I think you're gonna be a quarter of that initial cost right out of the gate, to get them here, trained, and things like that. So that hundred and six thousand is only gonna be seventy-five this year, and four of them are gonna be a hundred thousand for, for next year's deal, i- it'll come back to that year after year, you know, for a keep-going fund, um.
So I think, I think that's really true, that, you know, that you're probably not gonna see that full, that full hundred and six in the first year, you're probably gonna see something, something less than that, a percentage of that, because you're not gonna, they're not all gonna be coming on.
At once.
They're not all coming online July one.
Right.
They're gonna be some staggered out there, you know, as, as we can get them, maybe we can't even get all those officers that first year.
By the time we got them, that wipes our ninety-eight down to nothing anyway, in my eyes.
That's why I'm uncomfortable, I'm comfortable.
I know that you are way overwhelmed. We don't want you to get behind on what you do every day to have to take care of this planning and, and I, I don't think that you can, I don't think you can do it without one, I, that's a bunch of money. But we wanna be, you know, our city's got bigger, and so we need to accommodate what a big city does. So that, that's my thought, I, I like it as is.
All right, now, we need to give him some direction.
So let me repeat back what I heard, and, and see if, and, and if I've, if I miscommunicate, stop me. What I heard is, these expenses are all considered necessary for the city. Some of it, we, we need to verify with the police chief about timing of hiring officers, number of officers. But that targeting approximately a million dollar property tax increase for presenting the tentative budget is where we'd like to be. And we'll make the budget balance with that property tax increase of approximately a million dollars. And in, and include for right now, most of these expenses will adjust down just a little bit for the, for the police officer's timing of things coming in, maybe the planner of when that comes in. And make sure that this budget balances for the tentative budget. Is that what I heard? And then, following up with what I heard after that is, after we get through the tentative budget, we start into final budget discussions. Then we'll discuss about potential for budgetary savings off of department budgets, and isolating some of those down. So with the effect that maybe the property taxing increase can come down, and those budget cuts will bring it down in line and match up.
That's where the balance will happen at that point, if we decide not to go for the full amount.
And that'll happen as we go into the, the final budget come June. But for the tentative budget, we'll put in the million dollars. Does that sound like what you?
So, that's the, uh, that's the full, the full, the full amount, you're gonna put in the full amount in the, because we're, we're sort of identified that these are all necessary.
Yep, the only thing we'll do is tweak with the timing of when an officer comes on.
That's where I think there's probably gonna be a fairly significant amount of, you know, that's, that's.
It might bring down for the property taxes nine hundred, but we're, we're gonna keep it right in that, right in that range. Is what we'll target for.
I think all of those, all those positions probably would be something you would could argue that in, for every one of those positions.
For the tentative budget, we, we might leave them just a little bit higher so that can target down and reduce some of the, the property tax increase.
But that's this year, that's, then next year it's the full, the full.
That's why I'm worried about doing too much, but
Yeah.
I understand, I understand the need to cut it down for this year.
Yeah, so let's, let's just play with that for just a minute, let's just say, let's just remember those numbers right there, but let's just maybe plug in.
Well, hold on, Lyle, before you get going, I, I think, just go with that. I, I like the whole thing about going in saying we're gonna shoot for fifty percent, and then it's a lot better when you go in high, ask high, and then you can come back and say, oh, we can cut. Cause we can, we'll be able to do that after the tentative budget, we can look at it, we can figure it out, so that's the worst thing we're gonna have to see is that right there, so I'd go in that way. And worse comes to worst, we'll.
What do you think?
That's, that's what I'm, you can still move
Right.
with these numbers after, you know, we've made the announcement and that type of stuff.
So my, my next question, and I know this is sort of, it's sort of like, uh, going to Las Vegas a little bit, cause we don't know the, we don't know really what's gonna happen with everybody's budget. But those numbers, we see the three seventy-six and seven fifteen, those don't include what we think might be savings, correct? Am I correct on that?
They do not include any potential budgetary savings. I'm not gonna promise any either, but.
No, I'm just, I'm just sort of, just kind of working it out in my head a little bit here.
If we got to the end of the year, then yeah, I, let, let's go down this path, let's say we, we adopt this budget, for whatever reason, this gets adopted, and we go all the way through to the end of twenty-four. And we analyze everything out, and because of timing of hiring officers, timing of certain expenditures, certain expenditures didn't have to be made, we have a great year, and we don't have to use every single ounce of salt in the entire state. And let's say we save a half a million dollars. Well, let, let's use, we come in and we save a million dollars, let's say the nine hundred thousand, that's about what Chad is, nine hundred thousand. Let's say we come up with nine hundred thousand, we'd be coming back to the council and saying, okay, where would you like to put this excess? Would you like to put it towards roads? Would you like to put it towards some other development project? Would you like to stash it away for rainy day? What would the council like to do with those excess funds? And that can help with the road funding shortfall of roughly three point five, four million dollars. You know, and use those, but it ca- that could be a solution. So you may not have to make the decision right now as to where those would go um, for any of those savings, but the, it's definitely gonna be a council decision.
So this, these decisions will have to be made June, we're gonna have to have pretty good, we gotta have a direction where we're gonna go. Uh, by, by June, we're a month away from the end of the current year fiscal budget. Are there, are there potential savings that we're not identifying right now that could, could, could occur because of that? Savings that we're not identifying right now that could 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 occur because of that. I'm. I'm just stretching here just a little bit to kind of get a feel. Are there gonna be some positive? Things are.
My gut, my gut feel tells me yes, based off of the last budget I was analyzing. Um, barring anything unusual happening between now and the end of the year. Um, you know, we've had, we have some budgetary savings. I mean, some of this thirteen percent you have to realize comes because. Maybe we're down an officer for four or five months cuz one leaves. We're down a fire chief or some, you know, there's, that's. Sorry, that's a different fund. But you're down, you you have some of those savings result just because of turnover, so there's savings in some of your payroll. There there's savings that come through for other means, so I ant- plus we budget our sales tax a little bit lower, so I anticipate, yes, there will be money left over. But I also anticipate the council's gonna be wanting to take that money and put it towards roads or something else that's underfunded. To help make sure those projects can happen in a timely manner. But we'll, we'll give the council plenty of options when they, when it comes to that point. I I discourage using your savings to fund ongoing costs. That only takes you so far.
Yeah, we get it. We we understand, but the the important thing for you though now is, do you have a, do you feel like you've got a little bit of a direction?
Yeah, I'm confident with where we're at. Yeah, I appreciate the council. I I realize we put you on the hook and thank you.
No, the way that you put it. Really helped me. Last year I kind of said eye on a couple of things and I thought. This year, I'm grasping it, you know?
This has been very, very helpful. This whole, this whole exercise that has gone on now.
You said you've never done this before, right? Put it backwards like this.
Uh, not creating a an actual spreadsheet where i- i- you know, you're totally letting just decisions happen, so. This is a fun exercise for me.
Okay.
It was eye opening, it was, it was, I might have cried, but.
You'll cry when you got a home shovel of snow.
Thanks for that.
I I think about these onion growers and and uh, holy cow, they should have had their, had that stuff in a month ago and. It'll be probably several weeks before they can even get on the ground. It's so saturated, but. So I guess things could be.
Things could be worse.
Council, should we um? There's only a couple of items on the on council business.
Hey Mayor, we could talk about the enterprise funds. We've only talked about.
Okay, very good. Let's move into that. Thank you for reminding me.
So now the second part of the city. According to Paul, the most important, right? So I just wanted to give the council ideas on what are, what are in the next year's capital project plan. And we can go through the five-year plan, but uh, kind of like we did last week. We can go through kind of the twenty twenty-four column. And um. So for the water fund, there is a couple of items in. In this ASR project that's based off of uh, or contingent upon the CDBG grant that we received, so it will be fully funded. Um, but that's one of the bigger, um, one of the big bigger projects for the water fund. That's the Aquifer Storage Recovery Project. And then um. Couple in the, in the secondary water are the equalization basin um, construction. And that East Canal is.
Is that a question mark there, that East Canal? Or you think that's something we can, is that something we can wait until next year on?
I think it will, from from what I understand, it will kind of be contingent upon when they pump in on the East Canal. Once they put the pump in, we have to construct the basin, so. If they put the pump in this next year.
But we won't be pulling water next year.
Yeah, I mean, that that's the thing. It's it's a year away.
Yeah.
Of even anything. You know?
So it could, it could get moved to twenty-five. If it doesn't happen, it would.
That's why I'm wondering if that one could be. I know the other one's gonna be a critical one that we need to do.
So any questions on the water fund with those?
Just that one, just the one on the East Canal.
Um, upcoming, we could look at twenty-five. Uh, we, we received that, well, we're ninety-nine percent confident, or is it a hundred percent? We received that uh. Money to to build out service area number four.
Okay, so let me give you an update on that. Uh, that has been approved. And so uh, the way it was explained to me is uh, we will start service area four and as as the request for payment. From Rops or whoever, whoever the contractor is that does it. They they turn in a a request and then we pay it and then they turn in that request to the state and then they reimburse us. That's how I'm, that's how it was explained to me.
That's, that's good news.
So that could be something we could. Yeah, I thought this would be something we could do in the wintertime, but it sounds like it's probably not a very good wintertime project.
I got a question. Is your vacuum truck pricing your dump truck backwards?
It's a percentage probably, cuz there's multiple funds that are gonna.
We found out out of.
Oh, that's right.
Three different departments.
That's right, okay.
Water sewer collection and storm drain.
See that in probably all three.
Never mind.
Um, so that's the water fund. We move on to the wastewater treatment plant. Um. Sean, did you wanna talk about the?
Yeah, so and Paul can join in. Um, so as you know, we're working on the IFFP, which is for the wastewater treatment plant. Um, since Garland's left and we have a pretty solid plan. The only portion that we're we're still working through is the buy-in portion, but. In going through the plan, um, we had identified needed improvements that need to occur. With uh, with one being an aeration basin, um. Essentially, that's that three million, three point five million dollar uh, improvement and uh. Really, the basis for the need for that improvement is based upon um. It's it's essentially oxygen that's needed to break down uh, the loading that's occurring from West Liberty Foods. And I think.
And multi-mill.
Yeah.
Multi-mill pre-bought capacity when we did the upgrade in oh-three, so.
And what we do is, you know, every three years, Paul will bring a permit um, associated with uh. With wastewater treatment issued to um, these different industries. And so there's a permit limit that uh, you know, their uh, affluent can't be greater than a a certain um, certain standard. And West Liberty Foods is consistently exceeding that standard by a significant amount. Um. You know, when they look at essentially what the percentage, you know, if they're looking at what's causing this, I think they assigned essentially. Eighty, eighty-eight percent, somewhere in there to West Liberty Foods, so. So we haven't had those conversations yet with West Liberty Foods. Um. You you know, I mean, we need to build the capacity and then the question is, is how do we get, you know, how do we collect on the capacity? And you know, one thing that we would approach them is is participating in um, in this. This capital, this expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, and then we would up their limits to what they're consistently using. And consistent with their contribution. Um, otherwise, we're gonna have to probably look at penalizing them in reverse, so. You know, when they, when there's overage and they exceed their limit, then there would be a significant penalty, you know, for that. Um, or something in between, you know, maybe they do more onsite wastewater treatment. I mean, there's there's sort of a range of options. I'm just giving you the two. You know, two ends of the spectrum. Um, but regardless of of how we sort of deal with the issue after. We need to work towards increasing our capacity, you know, this year, and so that's being proposed and you can see we have. The four point five million, um, you know, available to make that um, to make that expenditure.
And we, and they do pay a penalty, it's just not. A real heavy, heavy penalty for being over. Both industry does.
Yeah.
They exceed their permit, they pay a penalty, but it could be, but whatever we do for one industry has to be done likewise to each industry.
Yeah.
Even though the one industry doesn't exceed their permit very often, they're a heavy loader, but like I said, upfront, they paid. The price to build capacity. And with West Liberty, we gave them. Excess capacity, but their wastewater strength ended up being greater than that. And we've been working with them on issues all along. And they are looking at some pre-treatment options. I don't know how drastic they are, but they are looking at them. Those are funds we have already collected. They're in our bank.
Um, sewer fund has a big project this year, the East Main project. That's why the. The available fund balance is so low. Uh, it does receive utility fees throughout the year, so it would be able to pay for. For this, but there's a, there's a group of students who would come over and measure. All of our sewer manholes in the city and uh, put them on a GIS map and allow us, allow us access to that. So that's kind of the only major project we have planned for the sewer. And Storm Drain doesn't have any um, active projects coming up for the next fiscal year twenty twenty-four. We. A lot of little bit of money just to um, in case there's some, some water shares that. So. Those are the, those are the four utility funds. Again, the utility fees. Typically pay for utility funds. Um, and so that's why we've kind of separated the discussion this year. Amongst governmental fees and and the utility fees. Any questions on those, council? Good. That's all I have um, for that, so.
Well, since we just have a couple of items on the agenda, why don't we just take a little break right now and. And uh, we don't have any uh, closed session or anything tonight, do we?
Hmm, no. No, we're good.
Why don't we just take a little break here and and uh. I think we need to set some chairs up unless they've already been. Okay. Probably oughta set those chairs up and stuff, so. Get my little act together here just for a minute. We've traditionally, what we do is we have an opening prayer and we have a pledge of allegiance. And if there's anybody here that you feel uncomfortable with a prayer, you can step outside or step in the back room over there. Otherwise, I asked Lyle Vance, our city council member, Lyle Vance, if he'd offer us an opening prayer.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee at the opening of this Tremont City Council meeting. We're grateful unto thee for all thy many blessings. We're grateful for the moisture that we are receiving and ask that we receive what we need for the upcoming season ahead. We're grateful to live in this community. We're grateful unto the people who manage this city and run the city, all the employees. Please bless them in their efforts. We're grateful to see the youth in our area come on a monthly basis. We ask a blessing upon them that they'll have the blessings they still stand in need of. We ask a blessing that we will be able to listen to the issues tonight, that our minds will be opened, that we can hear all sides of the issues so that we can make prudent and wise decisions for this community. We're grateful to live in this country, in this area, to be able to have the freedom that we enjoy, to be able to make those decisions that we feel are right for our area. Again, we're grateful unto thee for all thy many blessings and ask these things. Name it, my son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. And I've asked Wes E. Step, our council member, if he'll give us a pledge.
The audience, please rise and repeat the pledge of allegiance after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lyle and Wes. Introduction of our, yeah, so these are the folks who sort of help us make things work. And so I'll just kind of go down the list here. And we got our, over here to my left, we've got Sean Warrenke, our city manager, Wes E. Step, city council member. Connie Archibald is asked to be excused, and she won't be with us tonight. Lyle Vance, council member. Brett Rhodey also asked to be excused for this evening. Rick Siemens, our council member. Then we have Lindsay Nessin, Mark Christiansen, our assistant city manager. I believe I saw Chris. Yeah, Chris, you're back there. Chris Cothern, our fire chief. Until we can get somebody permanent, he's filling in. Dustin, are you, I didn't see Dustin here tonight, so. With the fire, anybody with the police department? Maybe not seeing. Shari Euler has been here with us earlier, and then Sarah Mormon with the Main Street. And I think I've got everybody. Did I miss anybody?
Paul Bravo.
Paul. How could I forget Paul? Paul Foljumar, Public Works Director. We appreciate all these people for their efforts and for what they do for us. Council, we have a, is there any conflicts of interest for this evening? All right. Approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Rick and seconded by Lyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, March 21st, 2023. Anything there that we, are we good to go?
Good to go. I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Wes.
Second.
Second by both Rick and Lyle. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, this is the moment we've all been waiting for right now. So let's, we're going to, I want to, this is something that has just turned into a great tradition for our first city council member, first city council meeting of the month. We have the opportunity of recognizing grade school and middle school students for their efforts to be good citizens and to be the kind of people that we all hope to aspire to be. And so what we're going to do is we're going to give you a certificate, and then we're going to give you a little card, giving you, so you can go get some.
Sugar.
Sugar. Yeah, that's why you all want sugar. We all need sugar. Okay, anyway, let's go ahead and get started here and. Wendy is here, Principal Wendy. All right. Here we go.
Yeah, Lyle, after they come up and get it, please stay up here.
Yeah, okay, so what we have you do is come up and then we'll give you the certificate and the card. And then if we can just have you stay here because we want to get some pictures of you, okay? All right, Nolan Dove. We'll make sure Nolan gets his certificate and his card. Emmett Allen. Here you are, Emmett. There you go. Reese Farnsworth. Congratulations, Chris. Lucy Archibald. Kendra Perez. Kendra? Kelsey Lewis. Everly Cedarholm. Isabel Lopez. Kevin Dubois. Good job. Casey Wethersby. Luciana Garcia Monares. Caleb Jensen. And Ian Hendrickson. All right, we need to get a picture, huh? How about if I just stand right behind you? And then maybe we can just kind of have your crowd around a little bit so we can get you all fit in.
Nice and close. Ready? One, two, three.
You guys can all take pictures, we got time. As parents, you got to be proud of your children and grandkids, because we're proud of them as citizens of our community. I would have never been there as a kid, but I didn't turn out all that bad, so. These kids got a big jump on life.
Think we got it? Thank you, everybody. You know, I couldn't be more proud of a group of young people as I am of these young people here tonight. They're great, good, just to see their smiling faces and who they're going to, the potential of who they're going to become is just inspiring to me. All right. We have a proclamation, Lindsay. You can stay. All right, here we go. Proclamation. Encouraging the observance of Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton posed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas a tree can reduce the erosion and precious topsoil by wind and by water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperatures, cleaning the air, producing oxygen and habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood, and wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase the property values, enhance the economic vitality and business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas wherever they are planted, they are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Therefore, I, Lyle Holmgren, Mayor of the city of Tremonton, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2023, as Arbor Day in the city of Tremonton. I urge all our citizens to support these efforts, to protect our trees and woodlands, and to plant trees where possible. I urge all citizens to plant trees and gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In the past, we've had an opportunity to plant trees throughout the city. Last year, we did, I don't know how many we did, but we probably did, I know, at least 20, maybe probably a lot more than that. But this is a great thing, and hopefully you'll take it, you know, observe the 28th of April and plant a tree or two. Okay, public comments. This is an opportunity to address the city council regarding your concerns or ideas. We ask that you be concise and with your comments, but the time is now yours to make public comments.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Bill Roseman. I live down on 960 South. I just have a couple of quick things. When it comes to trailers parked on streets, law enforcement's been really good about responding and getting them to move their trailers when they've exceeded their 24-hour limit. I would like the police department to be more proactive about that. I shouldn't have to make a phone call. Law enforcement's throughout the community, when they're driving around, I would like to see law enforcement take note of trailers on the road, and if they're there 24 hours later, do what they got to do to get those residents to move them. Trailers are a big safety problem when you're driving down the road and there's kids playing and you can't see through them or around them. I almost hit one last year, okay, because they come flying out in front of a trailer, bam, there they are. Somebody got hurt, but that can happen, and the last thing I want to do is hit a kid, not to mention they're an eyesore. I don't want to look at them either. So we have 24 hours, whether they are attached to a vehicle or dropped, and then they have to be moved. So I expect, since that's the ordinance, that's what law enforcement has explained it to me, so I expect if people have trailers on the road, that they're there for that 24 hours, they have to load them, unload them, clean them, whatever, and then move them so that we can see. The other concern I have is Utah has a statewide leash law for dogs. My wife and I, we like to walk in the neighborhood and get exercise. We walk quite a ways. I've had a couple of experiences with dogs so far that haven't gone anywhere, fortunately. But I'll give you a couple of examples. Last year, my wife and I, we walked down to Rocket Road, over to 1,000 West, I believe it is. We come up here, and is it Sixth that goes all the way through, comes back to Tremont? We were coming down there, and there's a house that's with an unfenced yard. As we're walking by, a rather large As we're walking by, a rather large dog started running and barking. My wife went, went to walk away. Well, I turned and drew my gun and stood my ground. This was a big dog. There was no fence and he was coming. Fortunately, the dog stopped. And I yelled at the dog a couple of times, and I don't know why, but for some reason, he decided to turn around and go back the other way, which was a relief to me. I really don't want to shoot somebody's dog, but I don't want to get bit either. Um, the other occasion, my wife and I were walking around the park down here, north of here, a couple of blocks north. And there was a dog, well, there was a guy walking and he had his dog and it wasn't on a leash. And that dog was coming up and acting like it was gonna bite us and nipping at us. And I told the guy, I says, you need to get your dog under control. Oh, he won't bother nobody. Well, the dog's lunging like he's gonna bite me. He's a little dog, probably could have stepped on him, but he's not on a leash and the guy's not doing anything. And when I tell the guy there's a leash law in Utah, he just kind of rolls his lies, his eyes at me like, I don't give a damn. Nothing happened, fortunately. The reason I'm bringing this up, I don't want to kill somebody's dog. I'm not gonna get bit. I'll do what I have to if the dog makes a believer out of me. I'm not gonna do it unless it's necessary. But here's a scenario that I really, really worry about, okay? We're walking down the street. We have every legal right to be on the sidewalk. Somebody's dog's unleashed, they're walking down the sidewalk, the dog attacks. Makes a believer out of me. I dispatch the dog. Now I got an owner there that's upset because their dog's gone. One or two things, the first thing that's gonna happen, if that scenario ever happens, is my wife's gonna call law enforcement. She's gonna call nine-one-one immediately. We're gonna get, we're gonna call law enforcement. The thing I'm trying to avoid here is what if this person that owns this dog in that scenario gets upset, doesn't stay back, and attacks me? Now we've escalated even further. I don't want to see that happen. That's why I'm bringing up this at city council. I don't know how you can do it, but I would like you to get the word out to the public that there is a statewide leash law and that their dog has to be on their property fenced in, leased in, or on a leash when they're walking. They have to be able to control their dogs so that nobody gets bit and nobody's dog gets shot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Our police chief is here, so he, he got the word.
Can you tell me about the trailers? Where about was that? The, which one? The trailer issues you're seeing? Do you have an address for me?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll continue on with public comments. Okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate those comments were made. More council business. Uh, council, we have, uh, two items we need to, we need to, uh, work on. A discussion and consideration of adopting resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three, appointing Mike Garrett to serve on the library, Tremont City Library Board, and reaffirming, reaffirming and appointing existing library board members. Let's see, uh, we don't have a representative of the library here. Oh, there you are, okay.
I'm not here for that, but am I? I didn't hear what you were needing.
Well, we're just going to, uh, appoint Mike Garrett to serve on the Tremont City Library Board, uh, and reaffirming the appointing of existing library board members.
Kim is out sick today. Kim Ripdell.
Okay.
So I don't know if she's gonna be here for that or not.
I think we can just go ahead. I think we can just go ahead and do this. Uh, council?
I would make a motion to approve, adopt resolution twenty-two, or twenty-three dash twenty-three, appointing Mike on the library board.
I'll second.
Moved by Wes and seconded by Rick. Uh, Rick?
Rick, aye.
Lyle, aye.
Wes, aye.
Motion passes. Uh, discussion and consideration of adopting resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four, approving a cooperative agreement for phased development improvements between Utah Department of Transportation, UDOT, and Tremont City and Rivers Edge, uh, Real Holdings LLC for future traffic signal at the intersection, at the intersection of Main and State Road one oh two and nine fifty east, and other improvements at the intersection of sixteen hundred east and four fifty north. Sean, do you want to just bring everybody up to speed on that and what's going on?
Yeah, these are, uh, so with this, this Rivers Edge development, there was a traffic impact study that was done. That impact study looked at improvements that were needed and that were attributed to the development. And, uh, as you know, the city, um, exacts the improvements that are needed or caused by development. So one of those improvements that are needed that we know in the future is gonna be a future traffic light at the nine fifty east, Collector Road and Main Street. And the first phase of their development doesn't trigger that need, but subsequent phases will, which is why UDOT, uh, wants us to enter into this agreement. Uh, with the first phase, they'll do the improvements on Main Street, the XL acceleration, deceleration lanes, and essentially create the intersection. And that's the time to sort of, UDOT's time to, to make all these improvements in play. Subsequently, we approve additional phases, and so that's why it's, it's an agreement that, you know, includes all three parties because we will help enforce and won't issue additional permits till that traffic light is installed at the appropriate time. The other thing I just wanted to mention to you is, so we've been going back and forth, and the agreement that you see is, is in its final form, with the exception of one term that I'm hoping that they, um, that UDOT will amend the language just so it's written more clear, but the intent will be the same. So, uh, my intention is, is to have you consider approving it. If you approve it, I'll follow through and, and, uh, hope to get that last term clarified a little further, and then I'll, I'll sign the agreement. You know, if you approve it. The other thing I was just gonna mention is it will be recorded in the, the county recorder's office as a way to put other people on notice who might, successors of interest. So if, if the developer sells after the second phase, then, you know, the new party will know what the obligation is, so.
So, uh, you're, you're gonna try to find out what the trigger point is? I mean, like, how many houses need to be built or something? How many people are in there before they put the stoplight up? Is that what you're asking for?
No, um, it's just that, uh, there's a term that says we'll hold, uh, future permits until something happens. And so that's, that's the term that I, I wanna, yeah, just make sure it's absolutely clear because we're gonna be enforcing the agreement essentially by virtue of, you know, as additional applications are made, we're gonna be saying, no, you need to go to UDOT. But to answer your first question, so the, the traffic impact study projected at thirty-five percent of buildout, that they would need to have that, that traffic light installed. The language that's in the agreement says that they'll amend with each phase, they'll submit amended traffic impact study and, and revisit it. So it's gonna be somewhere between, I would suspect about thirty-five percent, but UDOT's requesting actual amended traffic impact studies with each phase, and they'll monitor it that way.
Any other questions, council?
Motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four.
I'll second.
Moved by Lyle Vance and seconded by Rick, uh, or Wes.
Wes, aye.
Lyle Vance, aye.
Rick, aye.
All right. That completes our new council business for this evening. That's a new, that's a new one for us. Finished this in twenty-five minutes. Um, okay, uh, calendar items, uh, we've got an upcoming League of Cities and Towns meeting coming up on the nineteenth, is it? Uh, Lindsay? Um, let's see, who, who all is planning on, are you planning to attend?
Me, you, Lyle, and Connie.
Okay, and then Rick and you guys were out of town, weren't you? Okay. Uh, let's see, any unfinished business items that we need to discuss? Or is there any other, are there any other items?
Just a reminder about next Monday, the fire chief's sentencing.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah. That'll be from.
One at six and one at seven, so.
Okay, and that is for all of the council, right?
Yes.
There's another item that's bottom. So Kathy Newman, she's retiring this month. She didn't want to have an open house or a dinner or anything. She, she wanted to take her volunteers to dinner and that's about it, but.
There you go.
Miss her and appreciate what she's done, so.
I went and seen her today, and she's having a tough time leaving. She says, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna miss the people, you know, but she says it's time and she knows it's in good hands and we'll miss her over there for sure.
Carrie over there working out at this point.
Yeah.
She's been there, hasn't she, for quite a while?
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years, yeah.
There you go. Uh, is there anything else on there, Lindsay? Anything else council needs to bring up, calendar-wise? All right, unfinished business or action items. Is there anything on the docket that we needed to kind of resolve?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I got.
Yeah.
So we've only got one more meeting before June first, correct?
No, before, at the tentative budget.
Before.
Uh, so it'd be May second, um, is our next city council meeting, bar, I mean, other than our fire chief interview that we'll do on Monday. So that's.
We've got three meetings before June first.
Yeah, and we'll continue to do the budget discussions and conversations as part of that.
Okay, Mark, do you want to give us a little update on the branding, on branding?
Oh, if he's gonna do that, I'm gonna do that.
They took one of our flags that we're gonna put on Main Street and put it up out in front of the city office. I think that looks good.
It does, yeah. Yeah, it looks really good.
We're working on wayfinding, which is probably another big.
Call the same side, that's why.
Is that this?
We're gonna, yeah, we're working on wayfinding signs. There's gonna be a couple of welcome signs on the ends of Main Street and then different directional arrows and it'll all, it'll all be branded with our colors and logo. That'll, that'll look pretty nice. Downtown, uh, it'll say kind of welcome to downtown and downtown, kind of segregated from the rest of Main Streets.
Okay.
What's your limits, what's your east and west on downtown?
It follows the historic district, which is essentially, um,
East to?
And third east.
Third east and.
To the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
So Jim and Dave's is in the historic district and then the old hospital, which, uh, Legacy Square? So I think it's called Legacy Square is sort of the east-west on Main Street.
That's the old, old, old hospital.
Yeah, that's right, the old, old, old.
The three old hospital.
When I was born in. Okay, uh, anything else on that? Okay, uh, administrate, uh, direct, you guys, Paul, do you have anything to? Department heads, that's what I was trying to think of. Wouldn't come out. Uh, chief, do you have anything?
Uh, no. If you guys have questions for me, I can take those, but other than that, business as usual.
Okay.
I have questions.
Is there a lot?
You're talking about the, yeah, tentative budget.
Okay, yeah.
Can you kind of talk us through, give us a feel?
Sure.
Because we were talking about, uh, four new police officers, a sergeant and a civilian.
Three, three officers.
Three officers.
Three officers.
We can go with four though, if you're more comfortable with that.
And a civilian.
Yeah, um.
Just, you, the, the question derives, you know, we got Garland and Tremont thing going on all the time, so, you know, we're trying to get per capita, the, the police per capita down to where it's acceptable.
Correct.
Where does Garland and Tremont place in that?
Uh, Garland's actually ahead of the game when it comes to staffing per their population, whereas we're kind of falling behind. I don't have all my PowerPoint with me, but they're, they're right where they should be. We're actually kind of lacking on our staffing numbers, and that's why we've asked for what we've asked. Um, part of that's, you know, our population. We obviously have a greater population than them.
Can you drill that number down closer the next time we meet?
Yeah, it's.
There's six twenty-five per officer up in Garland and we're eight eighty-four in Tremont. I'm just curious to see, you know, how that, that waits out with four new policemen with a sergeant and three, three more policemen.
Yeah.
How that all works out.
Yeah, it'll put us, uh, I believe we'll still be behind them, um, off the top of my head. They actually do have an extra allocation that's vacant right now, and that might be where the math isn't coming back correctly. But this will get us to, our staffing needs to assure we have two on, on every shift, and that's ultimately the goal. Um, as far as the extra sergeant, that's just for span of control, uh, so we can keep track. And it's really important for checks and balances and to avoid liability to have a leader for every number of officers. That way, we're checking reports, we're making sure they're following policy and procedure, and we're protecting ourselves from any kind of, uh, civil or criminal liabilities or even just deviating outside of policy, which would put us in a position of liability.
Who's doing that now, chief?
So right now, we, we, we actually have Brian assisting with that. Uh, we all kind of throw in to try to make that happen. Uh, we have one sergeant who's gone on military, just came back, but he's going again for, I want to say like six months. And then Skylar, um, recently promoted sergeant, he's, he's doing amazing, but he is carrying a huge load of work. So he's basically proofreading almost all the police reports, going through that, trying to make time, altering his shifts, this, uh, visit with everybody. And then we, of course, review our body cam, make sure we're doing things right and address those issues. It's important to address some of those issues on duty, and that's where the sergeant comes into play. Ideally, my vision and what I'd like to see us get to, which we haven't been to before, is to have a supervisor with every officer. So if you're a new officer or you have a call you've never had, you have a source of information to go ask them. Our current SOP is you just call your sergeant day or night with your questions and, um, that kind of leads to burnout. And that's kind of what I'm trying to avoid too. As you guys probably know by now, because I've harped on it, is police are a commodity right now, and we're lucky to have what we have, and we gotta keep those guys. And my biggest goal is to try to improve morale by making the work manageable and safe, and safety is number one, and that's where we need these officers.
How about your, uh, civilian?
Yeah.
Can you kind of give me a description, but?
Sure, yeah. Uh, so before, we had two part-times. One is, is stopped working that much. She actually got employed with one of the elementary schools, so she's not really assisting. We have an amazing secretary, Tara, and she does a ton of work. And I've talked her off the ledge a few times. I would hate to lose her. She is like amazing, and she, she does all the, she does what a normal police staff would have five people do, and I'm not exaggerating. She does her evidence, she does records, she does all the administrative stuff as far as paperwork goes. We recently employed a part-time person to kind of fill that void. They're still swimming in work. And with losing one of our part-times, it would just basically offset that and keep Tara sane where she, she doesn't leave. Um, I'm hundred percent positive we can replace her, and my thing is, again, keep her stressed down so she sticks around and we don't lose her. That would be a huge hit. So that's why we need the civilian, and frankly, that's one of the top needs in my mind. I mean, officer safety is, is coming first, but yeah, she's just amazing, and if we lost her, it would, I don't know that things would function. We'd probably have to close the lobby pretty frequently. Occasionally, we have to do that, uh, just so we can manage evidence. Um, most police agencies, case in point, like the sheriff's office, will have full-time evidence techs. They'll have a full-time person for records and all these other things. Now, we can make that happen with our staffing, but we do, we do need that civilian. Any other questions?
Ninety thousand dollars salary?
For?
Benefits.
Yeah, benefits hits us just about as hard as salaries, is that right? So.
Question, what, what are you thinking about timing-wise? Like, how quick could you recruit and how many do you think you could recruit during a year?
That's a great question. Um, that, that's a challenge, I'll be honest. I, I, what I'm kind of doing, and I've worked with Lindsay a little bit, is by word of mouth and by knowing some people, I've been able to pull some in, and I actually have a guy that's interested in filling that Baylor spot. That's, which is, we're so lucky. It's been vacant for a while. It's really hard to get that. My goal is to get him kind of on the book. My goal is to get him kind of on the books, and then to transition him over into a full-time, great resume. He's, uh, I think he's got like seventeen years on, fantastic officer. He kind of left for personal reasons, went to the other state and came back. I would love to get him, but we're recruiting now, we're going to the academies, we're doing a lot of things outside the realm of what other police departments are doing, because it is a cops market right now, and everybody's competing, and most people compete with pay. One thing we offer that other agencies don't, and it's been really successful, is, um, good morale and caring about people and taking individual interests, that's what sets us apart, and we've even had people reach out from like Brigham who are interested, and frankly, our, our benefits, our pay doesn't match. So, how you treat your people really does matter to an extent, right? You can't get everybody with smiles and charm, but we can certainly edge out, um, some people, and that's what we're trying to do. If, if you were to, you know, bless me today and say, hey, here's three or four cop spots, could I fill them all? No. But we have that option, and it's something to work towards. I would try very hard to get two filled, and then we look at maybe sponsoring people through the academy and things like that, but just because we get the allocations doesn't mean we're going to be able to fill those, at least not right away. I mean, a lot of people are, love this city, and they're interested in this city. Um, Garland hasn't had much interest for their one open allocation, and believe me, I've tried to fill that, but I do get a lot of, we'll apply, but we'll apply for Tremont. So, we have a good thing going, a big part of that's our culture. Cops always remember, they remember if you treat them right, and they remember if you treat them wrong, and Tremont has a very good, long history of treating people right.
Any other questions for the chief?
And you guys are welcome to call me day or night, especially, I know you're wrestling with some big numbers and a big...
Yeah.
You know, it's a big ask for the city, but it's right for the city, especially with the direction we're going, and if you need numbers, if you need statistics, whatever you need, I can bring you that, we can go over that PowerPoint, I can send you that PowerPoint, and I'm happy to answer questions, because, you know, my guy's safety is my number one priority, and whatever we got to do to make that happen, I'll do. So, I'm available to you, I work for you guys.
We appreciate that very much.
Cool.
Thank you, Shaun. Let's see, uh, Chris, did you have anything for us tonight?
Oh, I think we're good.
Okay, Paul, did I, I already asked you tonight, okay. Uh, let's see, anybody else? Let's see, uh, Sarah, do you have anything for Main Street?
Um, we just have the farmer market.
Oh, yeah, coming up.
I mean, the snow is gone.
May, is that one of those?
Yeah.
I hope we have, we don't have any snow by then, I don't know.
We're gonna be sweating by then, Mayor, have a little faith.
All right. Julie, do you have anything for us with the...
Just a couple, yeah. All right, so our March intakes and outcomes, um, we had eighteen animal intakes this month. Um, we had twelve of those, twelve of the eighteen that were returned to their owners, which was a number we're pretty proud of. Um, we had three animals that were sent to rescues, one that was adopted out, three that are currently in foster, um, we did have two public safety euthanasias, um, we had one animal that died of injuries at the shelter, and we currently, well, at the end of the month, we had six animals in the shelter. Um, for our first quarter, we ended up with forty-two animals in through that first quarter, um, nineteen of those were returned to owner, which left us quite a bit of a deficit. We have roughly, just over fifty percent of the animals that are coming into the shelter that are, there's no owner claiming them. So it, it poses that challenge of having to spend that extra time of, um, not only the social media aspect of it, of trying to reach out and find an owner, but when we, you know, have spent, we've been extending the stray hold from the state required five business days, we've been extending it to roughly ten business days, just to try to help people become aware of where they can come, claim their animal if they're looking. Um, but at the end of that, we have to try to, um, reach out to rescues all over the place, um, to try to find fosters to take these animals in, or to try to adopt them out. So it's, it's pretty time-consuming, um, but we have been invited to partner with Best Friends Animal Society, which we're doing, and that will open up some, um, grant opportunities for the city, and, um, also, they're doing, uh, for the month of April, they're doing their, uh, Best Friends, uh, adoption, uh, Adopt Local Challenge, and I've, uh, signed our shelter up for that, so the purpose of the challenge is to help communities like ours, the smaller communities, to help the community understand where, to know where they can find their local shelter, so they know where to find their animal. The goal is to, to reunite those pets with their owner if they're out there, and then if they're not reunited with their owner, again, to help, to help the community understand the need to adopt local too, to try to, um, cut down on the number of people that are shopping breeders, which is a, it's a real challenge here, um, and to, to try to encourage people to, to come to the shelter first and try to find a good match there for them and their family. Um, we have a lot of really awesome dogs in there, so if you know anybody who needs a dog, we have some cute ones.
Very good.
Um, we even have some fancy ones, but anyway, so we're, um, trying to recruit , uh, extra volunteers, I've got a really solid handful of, uh, really, really good volunteers right now that is, um, has, is helping me focus more on some of the administrative parts of, of getting the shelter kind of, uh, running a little smoother, and, um, anyway, I'm just grateful for all the help that we've had, and all the Facebook shares and all the things, so we're trying to do better.
Okay, well, appreciate it. Thank you, Julie.
If you guys ever have any questions, reach out to us.
Okay, we'll do.
Who do you turn your stats into? Do, do they go through the chief for...
Goes out to social media, and then it will go to Best Friends, and then they report it to statewide.
So you'll just give us your monthly or quarterly?
This one was for March, and then quarterly, yeah, so monthly and quarterly, yes. Is that good?
Yep.
Ah, DRC, Shaun, do you have anything to report on for DRC committee?
Well, we haven't had a few DRC meetings in the recent past, um, you know, one item that we were working on, uh, and since has, has come to a conclusion, um, they're on one thousand north, and I forget the exit number, it's, it's, I guess, I eighty-four and one thousand north, there's ninety acres that are owned by, uh, an individual, and they were looking at trying to do a truck stop plaza there with a restaurant, um, and so we had a really good DRC meeting where residents came, and, you know, we talked through that area, the planning of that area, the zoning, what it all meant. Um, in the end, because of some of the topography and other challenges that are inherent to that site, um, that project is not going to go forward as, as contemplated, but, uh, they're continuing to try to figure out other land uses and the development, um, for that ninety acres. It's zoned commercial general, um, so it is, it is zoned commercial, even those four homes, I think there's four, there's three constructed homes, uh, four building lots, so there's one additional lot that's, that's undeveloped. Those are also, uh, zoned for that, that same zone commercial. So anyways, um, if you heard something about that, that's, that's where we're at at this point, is, is they've...
Were they, was that truck stop, uh, I think one of the, still one of the places they are considering is still another location in Tremonton?
Well, they...
Is that kind of just not so much?
Well, I'm, we're not sure, they wondered, um, so it's, supposedly there's a franchise that was granted to someone else, but who that franchise was, was granted to, or what agreement they entered into, we, we didn't know. Uh, they just know that it wasn't, you know, they got noticed that it wasn't with that them and that ninety acres that, that was at that location.
That all you have for...
That would have been a good asset.
Yeah, we'll keep, we'll keep trying, it's a little challenging, you know, part of what, what the conversation's revealed, as they started to do some preliminary engineering, is, uh, be our mountain road, and how we get that collector to align through that, that slope, because it's, it's a significant slope, and still main, maintain a slope that's appropriate for that road, um, which I think was at six, six percent, something like that. Um, so it was a good, it was a good exercise, I think they've got some really, um, good, um, developers, I mean, the property owners engaged a developer to help them through the process, so I, I feel like we're, you know, there'll be something that fits well within that site. Um, we were trying to be cognizant of the residents and the fact that there are homes there, and, you know, one of the challenges was where do you put the parking, because they didn't want the, the semi-parking to be located below the hill and that, that steep grade, you know, that they would have to negotiate during the winter time, so, so there were some, some challenges, um, but we'll, we'll continue to work with them and see if we can, uh, you know, find something that maximizes that, that use and still, uh, respects those adjoining, uh, property owners and, and how they're using their property.
Uh, council reports, Wes, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, no, I'm glad summer's coming. You know, we're gonna take the plows off so it can't snow.
Uh-huh.
No, I'm just glad, I think we as a city done well for the winter, the flooding, I, I believe Tremont City is pretty well out of the flooding deal, you know? But there's still plenty more sand and bags if somebody needs them, or whatever, it's, and I'm like you, I, I think it's great with the kids here.
Yeah, there you go.
That's the best meeting we have.
Wes, do you have anything?
I said it last, uh, time we met, but I, we appreciate the numbers and the effort, Mark and Shaun, especially Curtis sticking around and talking us through the numbers, so we have a better feel for what's going on.
Yeah, thank you.
I just echo that same thing, that, thank you very much, this helped, really happy, appreciate it.
I too want to echo that, and I also want to, uh, thank our Public Works and, uh, Fire Department for the, uh, well, Public Works for everything that's gone on the last little while, since August, seems like it's been a long time. We've dealt with a lot of issues with flooding and everything, um, Police Department, Fire Department for their efforts, we appreciate your quick response to that fire that we had, and, and, uh, we've been watching that family pretty close, and they, they're appreciating all the, uh, the, the community has really stepped up to try to help them out a little bit, and, and, uh, we appreciate that too. So we have a, we have a great community, and, uh, I just think it's, it, it's a lot about the you as a public and citizens, and how you watch out after each other and take care of each other, and we're just kind of in a, one of those situations where we can kind of watch it all happen, and it, it's, it's really heartwarming to see what, uh, what our community can, can accomplish. And with that, I don't have any other...
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, motion, motion to adjourn, passes, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for coming and... Appreciate you.